Just do a quick welcome, hi to folks who were with us last month and folks who were not. We'll go over a few things to make sure everyone is up to speed. But for this session, our objectives are on the screen there. We're going to address some follow up questions and answers about labor market information that we covered in the last meeting. And we'll have some quick updates about economic conditions and factors. And learn about effective practices from Travis at Marcy Lab School is going to share some things with us. And we'll have time for questions for each of these sections. And then the last half of the meeting, we'd like to spend some time with you kind of workshopping the priority goals. That we've developed as a network and think about. In our last session, the feedback form had a question about, how would you order them? We've been just kind of keeping them in an order which they came up, but not necessarily in an order of prioritization. And so we wanted to hear from you how you would prioritize them. And we got feedback from just a couple of people and those two people, of course, had some differences. So we thought it'd be a good conversation to host with the group and then think about strategies and action steps toward accomplishing those. How's that sound? Thumbs up, smiles, good. So our agenda, I kind of just covered it, don't need to do that again. I do want to just quickly go over the priority goals, you will have time to hear about them later. But I'll just read them out loud so that we're all on the same page. And like I said, these were just in an order of discussion, not of prioritization. So the goals that we have agreed to work toward are to strengthen collective mechanisms to negotiate with employers and with community colleges. For articulation and matriculation agreements. Organize and expand quality skills training, customize training and upskilling across tech skills training providers to meet demand. And be seen as a go to source for talent, particularly those with less than a four year degree. Systematize, digitize a referral network to scale training and increase upskilling opportunities to bolster the talent pipeline. And to establish a data set, data tool and data collection necessary to show skills based hiring. Versus degree requirements results in equal or stronger candidates and employees. And let me stop sharing so I can see you all. I can't find it, there you go, it's hidden. And if you could come off mute. I, we could popcorn around the room, I'll call the next person, share your name, your organization. Any tech training related updates or other updates? What you're currently thinking about, your organization's priorities, something you've read, new policies, anything that you think is affects the tech sector. And our conversations together, so. I am Carrie Fallheber, which I didn't introduce myself, but I think I know you all. I'm a vice president at Jobs First NYC. And I will leave the tech updates to you all and I will pass it to Travis.
Awesome, hey, everyone, I'm Travis Fox, I'm the head of partnerships at the Marcy Lab School, good to see everybody again. I'm going to be, I guess, talking for a while later, so I don't, I'll skip any updates for now, but yeah, I can pass it over to Daniel.
Hey, everyone, good to see you all, I'm not going to be able to stay for too long. But Harrison's here and Dave should be here as well. But I'm glad to be here, I am the director of programs at the Knowledge House. Something has been top of mind for me, so while one, we just finished our pre-program, which is the vestibule and we've been looking at. Who hasn't, who didn't make it through that part? And there's some things that we select for, which is their ability to adhere to some independent work. And we're trying to think about how we may support folks in the future who may need that without. Within the bounds of the resources we have, so that's top of mind and also thinking about. Apprenticeships, which we are looking to pilot and you know, just see how that goes this cycle and expand that in cycles to come.
Daniel, you want to pass it?
Yes, I will pass it to Harrison.
Thank you.
Cool, thanks, Daniel, I'm Harrison, business development and partnerships at the Knowledge House. One thing that I've seen recently, I think, I know we'll be talking a bit about labor information and news. But I saw an article recently about how a lot of laid off employees are actually finding new opportunities at a really fast rate. And so I think that's interesting and it shows that the market for opportunities that our fellows are entering into is still. Fluid and still strong for them as well. And I'll pass it over to Helen.
Good afternoon, everybody, it's a pleasure to be here, I am the executive director for Empower Metro, which includes New York and New Jersey. And top of mind for us are also apprenticeships, we have an apprenticeship in New Jersey, but New York State is way beyond, behind the curve on that. It's, New York State is a tough monolith to not, so good luck for those that have this apprenticeship within their real house. And we also talk a lot about changing the requirements for education with a lot of our corporate partners. And I had a really eye opening moment with one of our largest hiring partners two months ago. And it was an aha moment, guys, and I wanted to share it with you in case this is epic for you as it was for us at Empower. So for years, we've battled the, we are very diversity driven as our hiring partner, but. We want a college degree, so give me, you know, minority women, vets, but they have to have a four year college degree. And we fought a lot against it and we've certainly seen the tide change, especially in the last two years. And folks are a lot more open to getting talent that doesn't have the degree, especially for, you know, the tech roles and. Integrate our talent and even help with an onboarding process and a support system. But I didn't really understand the college piece, I thought it was a bit of snobbery and elitism and you know, what have you, and it's really not. So one of our corporate partners who has probably, I mean, it's Deloitte, so you can imagine the size of this organization and their hiring needs in America. And they said, the reason we want a college degree is we hire so much international talent. And it's so much, well, they didn't say this part, but, but this is off the record, it's so much cheaper to hire talent that. In order for us to do so, we have to prove to the Department of Labor. That there's a reason we're not hiring American talent and that's because international talent is stronger. And that four year degree has been that barrier or that milestone that a lot of Americans don't have. So if we pull that down, we will have no choice but to hire more American talent and it basically will be a lot more expensive. So when you're talking large scale hiring needs, I mean, in tens of thousands, that's a big deal, maybe the smaller company, not so much a big deal. And we had no idea that this was it, we really thought it was a question of. Having a certain checklist of what they think an attractive candidate is, and that's not the case, it is a business decision. I can't say for certain that this is every corporation, that this is their thinking, but Deloitte, one of our largest partners. Does have that concern, so we're trying to figure out, can we develop a pipeline of talent? That would be independent of their traditional hiring, like a certain program, a diversity program. And what would that look like rather than the traditional route, because there's so many cobwebs to pull away. To make it worth the while of the difference in salaries between, let's say, talent from India or. I don't know Croatia versus American talent. So I wanted to share that with you, our friends in the field, because you know, this may be a value impact for you as well, understanding the ecosystem where some of our corporate partners operate.
Helen, thank you, that is really interesting and I would love to dig into that more with you. If there's time later in this meeting or another time, but it's so fascinating to me that you mentioned Deloitte. Because as most of you might know, Deloitte is a 110 partner and we were just sent a list of jobs from them. That I was going to share, we have like two slides of jobs from them in Jersey City and in New York. That obviously are, don't require four year degree because that's the 110, you know, initiative rule. So it's, it's interesting that that's what you're hearing from them.
Yeah, they're really, they're really trying to figure out a way to make this work, so kudos to them. And I think the answer may be initiatives like 110 or the like, which forego traditional, you know, traditional checklist. So very happy to hear that they're shopping around opportunities.
Okay, yeah, I just wonder also though, if it limits the number of jobs they will actually. Put, you know, through 110 because they don't want to remove that credential from a number of positions. But I will let you pass it on to someone else. Jorge.
Hi, I'm Jorge Haddad, I am the partnerships coordinator at the Marcy Lab School and I think the updates are going to be later with Travis. I'm going to pass it on to. Megan.
Hi, everybody, I am Megan Marshall, I'm associate of Work Solutions at Jobs First NYC. I met some of you last session, but hello to those I have not yet met. And like Carrie, I will leave all the tech updates to you all because you are the experts on that one. I will pass it to, who has not yet gone, David?
Sure.
David A. I don't want to pronounce your last name.
Oh, you're muted, David.
Alright, that's better. David Avila is the Knowledge House. So I didn't hear the, what was the question as we're popcorning? My apologies.
No worries, we're just sharing any general tech training related updates or something you are reading in the news, policies, anything really related to our conversation here.
Okay, this question caught me off guard a little bit, I see my director smiling a little bit, who's Daniel?
Yeah, I was going to just introduce you because I know this, so David, he's enough to hop on with very little context. But he is working diligently to engage some of our alum, so I thought he would derive a lot of value from the conversation. Already that article, I know David is super excited about that, but um, does anything else you have, David? Next time, next time, we'll bring some research, some well researched.
No pressure at all, no pressure, Dave, if.
Do you see the sweat bead running down my.
Joining and.
So, yeah, thank you for having me. Next, next meeting, I'll come a little bit more prepared. But yes, I'm diligently working on building up. Our alumni program here at TKH. With connecting, you know, providing support for a current alumni and building out future structures. Or more robust structures for future alumni as well and connecting them to tech opportunities. But yeah, I'm here to take a few notes. But thank you for allowing me to stumble over my toes, so to speak.
No worries, we're glad to have you join.
Thank you.
And I think maybe Elise hasn't gone, right?
Yeah, I think it might be the last one. My name's Elise Amato, I am the partnerships manager at Marcy Lab School, I've been here a little over two months. And yeah, Travis, I know, has like a lot of updates that he's going to share, but we are, you know, focused on scale at Marcy. Because we're bringing on a new fall cohort in about a few weeks and they've already sort of started picking up all their materials. And there's going to be 50 new students coming in and so we're thinking about how do we scale our employer partnerships? And bring on new, new business. And I know that a couple of articles have been shared about the economy, the econ major in me is really nervous about sort of the layoffs that are going on. But to your points, Dave and Harrison, I know that when people do get laid off, they tend to find jobs pretty quickly. So there are still some hot spots in the market, so excited to dig into that some more.
Wonderful, thank you, Elise, and I think Dave from our team, who everybody probably knows, but want to do a quick intro?
Oh, sure, because we do at least one new person, Dave Scott, manager for Work Solutions, Jobs First. In terms of tech news, that's interesting to me, I'll share one. It's less about workforce development, but more about just. Doing good for society with tech. And have to say, it's about, the short version is just what the headline says, that can help to stop misinformation. Tech companies essentially can help stop misinformation. This article is just summarizing a paper, I've not read the full paper, so I don't have all the juicy details, but. Good news for democracy, so yay.
Yay, okay, and then for just a quick update, I did want to share, we put on slides the jobs that we got that we thought were even remotely tech related. So let me get back to the deck. And 110 shared these, I think, earlier this week while I was out, so we could send them over email as well. But there were sort of jobs for Jersey City. And I know it's a lot of words and it's small, so just wanted you all to, you know, get a glimpse at it. The deck is, will be shared afterward and then we will share these directly, so you have the clickable links for the jobs. We want to make sure you have access to them to share with your networks. Particularly, I'm sure, the alumni network. That Dave is working on for the Knowledge House, I know, you know, alumni are probably really good sources of talent for some of the 110 jobs. As I've been looking through them, they look like that a lot of them in removing. Four year degree requirements are replacing that with experience. Not in all positions, I don't want to say that is like a broad statement across everything, I think when it comes to software developers and things like that, there's a lot of right out of training. Positions that will be available, but some of the other positions look more suited for people with some work experience. So we'll share those and. In our next meeting, also, I'd love to kind of dig into the 110 stuff a little bit more, but we have a pretty packed agenda here, so. I'll sideline that for now and Daniel, did you have a question?
Yep, quick question, so when you say 110 eligible, does that just mean, simply mean that they are. Registering with 110 and it is, they removed the, the, the college graduate barrier?
Yeah, so that, that heading on there, thanks for asking that, the heading on there came from. Deloitte, they, they sent, I have, you know, like four attachments with lists of jobs by region. So they sent Northeast, Northwest, Southeast, Southwest jobs. And within each of those documents broken down by cities. So we pulled out Jersey City and New York because of, you know, where, where you all are located. But that's how Deloitte lists those jobs, that's probably their internal way of noting that they're 110 eligible. Because on the employer side, there's a set of criteria that a job has to meet to be eligible for them to even. Included on the 110 platform and the two key. Criteria requirements are no four year college degree and above a 63,000 something, I don't know the exact number, whatever the MIT living wage calculator is. And that's inclusive of benefits, so the salary might not look like it's 63K, but with a benefits package and all that, it's the compensation package. So that's Deloitte's term, not ours.
Got it, thank you.
Yep. Any other questions about 110, not just these jobs, but anything about 110? Alright, Dave, I think I'm turning it over to you.
Thank you, Karen. So in one of our previous, most recent meetings, we went through a lot of different economic data. There are many questions that people obviously had about how. Interest rates changing the economy, et cetera, are affecting labor market, so I'm not going to go into all of that detail today. But of course, happy to share, reshare those with anyone who wants to see those. So today, going to go over a few other bits that are relevant and try to address some questions that people had. So just recapping what we talked about before. Tech jobs really surged during the 2010s, obviously, but especially surged during the first year, year and a half of the pandemic. And when looking at where freezes and layoffs are happening, freezes mostly in large companies, layoffs mostly in startups. And mostly concentrated in the less profitable roles, unsurprisingly, which, of course, things like sales and marketing, but more. Relevantly emerging tech, so. And sometimes legacy tech, so really the, the core parts that are the most profitable, pretty much anything with cloud is doing super well. And as, is no surprise, as interest rates continue to go up from the Fed, the BOE, the ECB. Probably less VC funding, already see in the data that the burn rates are lower. And that the various phases of seeding, the, and that the burn rate at various phases of seeding is going down in startups, in the US at least, I don't have. European data, so. It means companies more cautious in hiring, but there's definitely still continuing growth. So moving on to what we know now, starting just with youth unemployment in New York, nationally, sorry. Positive signs, the unemployment rate among 16 to 24 year olds nationally. Decreased from 9.3% to 8.5% in June, which, oh, we're stuck on the slide, I think, that's okay. There we go, but more importantly, and actually positively, the, the July. Youth unemployment rate this year lower than 2019, so that's, that's positive, obviously. Most all programs age agnostic, but good to just keep in mind, especially for those people who are likely to be looking at these kind of programs. That they are doing even better with getting jobs despite all the negative talk that we hear. And obviously, we all heard the, about the national unemployment rate continuing to go down, so. If interest rates will cause a significant problem in the market, it has not yet shown up in the data. But we will obviously keep a look and how that's going. What we know about openings and again, the problem with openings data is that it's even more delayed than the employment data. And the labor force data, always a two months delay, so openings are down, but. They are still at a extremely high level, so yes, lowest since September, but. Over 10.7 million openings, didn't mention here, but New York's share of the national employment. The national labor force has actually gone up recently from 6% of total employment nationally to 6.6%. So not only are openings continuing to be very high, but New York is continuing to do better, not only in absolute terms, but relative to the rest of the country. So again, good, good for all industries and should be good for tech as well. Someone was asking about, and I think multiple people have asked this, we're talking about conversion rates. Trying to look through a lot of things to find good numbers on this that are recent and tech specific. Found numbers that are not tech specific, but are good, less of interest, of course. But nationally, this is for the feds, 91% as of 2016, registered apprentices retained employment. More recently, looking at numbers, the conversion rate for interns and I don't have the equivalent figure for apprentices, unfortunately. But for interns, conversion rate last year, very good. In, not just very good, but better than it was in 2019 by a significant margin. I think it is probably safe to presume that if the conversion rate for interns is so high, it's probably also very high for apprentices. But again, I don't, we don't have that data, so I don't want to presume that. The only thing that I could actually find that was. Appeared to be good, but I don't, I did not get to see the methodology, so I don't want to say like, this is a number to trust. So that as of last year, 80% of apprentice, tech apprentices were being converted, however, like I was just saying, with the. Much higher listing jump from 2020 to 2021, even if that figure is rock solid accurate last year. It would be not necessarily prudent to presume that that's still the current conversion rate. So again, we're going to keep looking to try to find the data and get more information on that on the intern's eye, the apprenticeship, apprenticeship side as well. On the unemployment front, some of you may have seen Mr.'s numbers, again, good news, the unemployment rate continues to fall. Perhaps more importantly, the labor force participation rate, how many people are actually working or looking for work. Continue to increase another point two percentage points. As mentioned last time, the, these numbers sound small, but the gap between. High points and low points on LFR is actually pretty small. And this was the fourth consecutive month of an increase in the LFR, so again, if. The interest rates are changing, the tech sector or other sectors are causing issues, we're not yet seeing that in the data. Unfortunately, the DOL, and you all know this, the DOL doesn't have a nice little category that is tech, like it has for so many other categories. But looking at the percent change in jobs from June to July, looking at industries that have many tech workers. Does not suggest that there's been any dropdown in the hirings in tech. Where we did see drop for things like education, unsurprisingly, many teachers, even the end of the school year. So that's good news, but again, we don't have the kind of specific data that we'd like to see to be able to say, yes, these are how the tech numbers are looking over the past months, but we'll keep on that. Continuing with things that we don't know, just kind of summarizing, summing up what I was just saying. Very unclear how continued interest rate, you know, interest rate increases in other factors, both nationally and internationally. Will affect the tech sector, as is so often the case, there's that. Delay between when policies go into effect or when business decisions start to be made in private policy. And when that actually trickles down to employment numbers, but we will be tracking this carefully. Going to go on to something a little bit different, looking at, well, this actually, we talked about briefly, just looking at the labor force participation rates. Again, this sort of highlights what I was saying about how even though we talked about, oh, it increased point one or point two percentage points, that doesn't sound like a lot. The, the gaps between high and low have just been so small, from like the US all time high in the modern era to just before the pandemic started. Like fourish points from national level from just before to just after the pandemic started, like three points. So when we talk about how over the past few months, the rate has increased by more than a point in the city. That's, that's a pretty significant increase, thinking about how these changes are. And of course, having another look at the unemployment data, obviously, all seeing this frequently. And while there's been much talk about how it continues to be significantly higher in the US, or sorry, in New York than in the US. The rate has also been falling faster, much faster this year in New York than in the US, so progress is happening on that front. On the next slide, just looking at, again, one of the things that people have been talking about a lot concerning inflation and how that will affect the market. So it's hard to draw a straight line from inflation is X, so tech companies will do Y. But it's key to keep in mind. That inflation, the, the most talked about measure of inflation, the CPI is looking at this basket of goods. And the problem with looking at the basket of goods is that. Humans don't buy this pre prescribed basket of goods, they buy the things that they want and can afford. So there is another measure that's also used by the feds, that's just a less popular but better measure, the personal consumption. Now I get Elise back in here. The personal consumption expenditure price index, if I have that right, I always forget the order. But it looks at what people actually buy versus the pre prescribed basket of goods. So that inflation measure has consistently been lower than the CPI measure. And also looking at the. Uh and also looking at the New York metro area inflation, I. Said here in New York City, I should have said New York Metro. Uh that's also consistently been lower than the national figure. Uh not too surprising, given that a lot of the weighting and inflation is about. Gas prices and car purchases and as of. Three, four years ago, most households in New York City don't even have access to a personal vehicle, so they're just saving a lot there. Um also key measure, looking at gross domestic income instead of gross domestic product. Uh also shows a much more positive picture. And by the way, the reason mentioning all this is because when companies are actually making their decisions, they're going to look at the hiring decisions that affect. Their their profits, of course, not whatever the most popular measure is. So they want to know what's really happening, which is also why we want to know what's really happening. Uh so whereas gross domestic product looks at all the expenditures on all the things, gross domestic. Income looks at just that, the income. And in theory, the two should be exactly the same. Uh but over the past year, the gap has been wider than, I don't know if it's wider than ever. But wider than it's been in a very long time, uh to the point where if you look at GDP, uh the economy's currently. Just slightly worse than it had been before uh the pandemic. And if you look at G D I. It's doing better. So it's it's a pretty significant gap. And at the end day, more in income in people's pockets means they're spending more, which is good. Uh again, not going to go through this in super detail. Uh. If this will all be shared, if people want to see this very short version on all of this here is that. Uh looking at costs in the city, looking at how inflation is affecting people, especially in the city. And looking at compensation figures, which unfortunately are always somewhat delayed. Uh it looks like for the large majority of. Uh especially not high income, not non-driving New Yorkers, that uh their compensation is. Roughly keeping up with inflation, uh which means for tech employer companies that are focused on. The New York City market especially, uh that they are can expect that consumers will continue to spend. And in fact, in the latest. Uh reports on consumer spending showed that numbers were down slightly, but if one excludes. Uh gas prices, for instance, uh then consumer spending actually increased again. Again, this is despite increase in interest rates and all the talk about inflation, consumers are continuing to spend money. Um so that's all. Happy to take any questions. Again, we're going to share this all out, so. I'm going to take silence to mean that no one has any questions about anything, which.
Or they're thinking and need a minute.
Or thinking and need a minute, that's cool too. And if anyone has anything to add, not a question, but like, oh, there's this other key economic report that we should be paying attention to or.
I had one question, and I might have missed this on one of the slides, but. I took a screenshot of the uh eighteen to twenty or sixteen to twenty-four year old unemployment rate nationally. Is there, was there data for that in New York or?
That that would be nice, wouldn't it? So now this is from the B O S, uh which, I mean, even even getting the sixteen twenty four year numbers, it's. Always more delayed than getting the just everyone numbers or the. What is it sixteen to nineteen numbers? Um so no, unfortunately not. What we do, but there's Brian. Uh I I am going to expect that. Looking at the industries where the number of jobs in the city have been growing in percentage and absolute terms. Uh last months and months before, looking at the city's unemployment rates falling, the labor force participation rate increasing. Probably the numbers are continuing to go, the unemployment rates continuing to go down for sixteen to twenty-four year olds in New York City. But can't can't prove that. Hi, Brian.
Hey, Dave. Hey, everyone. Sorry about that. Sorry, meeting ran late.
All good. We we just covered tons of. Numbers and overwhelmed people with slides about inflation and C P I's and everything else.
Fun.
And we'll share the slides out afterwards so you can see them yourself.
Yep. Great. Then if there are no questions for now, we can uh transition over to Travis.
Sweet. I didn't know I was getting the whole agenda item here. This is uh no sweat or anything like that. So uh had just in conversation with Dave and and Carrie over email, uh I think a. Couple of fun updates had popped up around like our strategy at the Marcy Lab School, just given some of the growth and and updates from this year. Um so just wanted to talk through a few. I guess activities and strategies that we've been working on as we're trying to scale and grow up to be a big organization like the rest of y'all. Uh and hopefully share some best practices, um you know, gender some discussion and. Uh and see if we can just make all of our organizations better. Um so. The two kind of main topics that I was just hoping to to cover for like no more than five to ten minutes and then open up for questions. Uh are around recruitment um and uh tech apprenticeship basically. So. Um kind of kicking off with the recruitments, you know, when my had my first tech network meeting a couple of years ago, we had nine students. Um where we have about eighty concurrent students right now at Marcy and uh our fall class. Um like court, like at least mentioned, is going to be about fifty-eight students coming on campus. Uh in middle of September, so it's been a lot of growth like over the the past couple of years. Um recruitment and scaling recruitment has been a fun challenge. I think it's a challenge like we're all feeling based on these conversations in the space and in particular. You know, how are we accessing um students earlier in their journey before they get into our organizations? And how are we ensuring, you know, gender parity in particular um within these tech training programs? Um I think that's kind of the silver bullet that a lot of folks struggle with of colleges and our nonprofits. So. Uh coming up on this fall class, we're um looking at at gender parity, uh which is really exciting for. Uh fifty-eight software engineering fellows uh in the New York city space. Um and we've been able to increase the number of students that are coming straight from high school as opposed to some years of college or multiple years. Out of school and out of work. Um and so. Uh we're testing a lot of new concepts. I think we have a little bit of a luxury of being. A younger organization, so we can throw more stuff at the wall and see what sticks without too much uh harm. And so just wanted to share a couple. Ways that we've been approaching that. Um and then I'll transition into apprenticeships as well. So on early involvement, we had a couple of key strategies, and this is really stemming from feedback from our alums that. You know, hope uh about seventy percent of our students last year went to CUNY for at least two years and then dropped out and joined Marcy. Uh before finishing their experience here and going on to the career. Uh and every single time when we were talking to them, it's like, what do you wish you knew um a couple of years ago? And it's, I wish I knew. These programs existed, so I didn't have to go into that from college. Thankfully, you know, twenty K off the table, ideally for a lot of our students this week. Um but in general, we're we're kind of always getting in that discussion of like, how do we get in front of. Guidance counselors, principals, families, students much, much earlier in the journey. Um so a couple of things that we've experiencing or experimenting with. This summer and spring, um we started doing middle school career fair workshops at our local high school partner or local school partners. Uh as well as uh kind of um tabling and info sessions for freshmen and sophomores. Um usually that's really hard to do as a non-college entity, but I think there's uh I think good progress being made by. Um like the D O E and pathways team to help uh principals and guidance counselors. Be a little bit more receptive to having folks come in earlier to talk about non-college type activities. So oftentimes like those meetings were um able to to get part due to like informal M O U's or agreements with principals. And with heads of counseling at um local schools. Uh and so we have some like good templates to share there around um like articulation agreements and articulation agreements. Um if anybody is interested, uh and then the kind of compounding effect that I think really helped on the family decision this year is. Um we did family seminars and one-on-one meetings with our recruitment manager and interested families. Uh and then hosted a a family orientation um that was multilingual with multiple like workshop tracks. Um for everybody like involved in the decision this year. So it was. Nice, I think, having the physical space to be able to offer that, but. One thing we immediately saw was incre- increased yields in our number of acceptances to actual fall or number of offers. To acceptances and then increased retention through our pre-work vestibule. Um and some of the early thinking there is around, you know, having family buy-in versus. What we heard from alumni interviews that they have to kind of lie to their family about dropping out of college to come to Marcy. Um so that has really helped on on that front. And then. Um a couple external organizations that helped amplify our our network this year. Um to reach students earlier, uh Brooklyn Steam and Compsa High. Um. I think two organizations that are really thinking about multiple pathways coming out of their graduate pool. Um we were able to do hackathons at both those those campuses in a really. Kind of easy way. They organized most of it. They brought the students. We had a few staff go and participate as panelists and judges. Uh but it really helped kind of build the brand and show um interest and investment back into those communities. Um and then we worked with the Trevor Project uh this year to through a grant that they received from G M um target LGBTQIA plus. Communities um for for our like kind of local high school recruitment. Um and then last thing on like gender, gender parity goals. Uh we partnered with Code with Clausy and Code Nation um around their female STEM communities. And hosted a couple of summer camps on campus, which. Is uh we don't have room for anymore, but since we hadn't had fifty students come in yet this summer, we had a lot of physical space available. So thinking through how we might be able to do that in the future, when now we're like out of desks, we're out of computers at our office. Um we're hoping to kind of co-pitch groups like Go Grow with Google. Um to use their spaces as a common kind of common partnership between organizations. So. Um just a couple fun ones there and and Carrie, Dave, happy to pause and talk through recruitment before I switch over to apprenticeships.
I'm curious what the most so I see Brian, I'll go right to your next, uh what the most. Surprising thing has been uh while you've, from when you started setting this up to what you're actually seeing on the ground.
Yeah, uh I think the two most surprising that we've seen were the success of like a single family orientation on yield. It was like dramatic um to to say the least. Uh and we thought maybe a few people would show up and closer to, you know, half the families that had been extended offers showed up. Um and then uh I think being able to do uh to actually get into to counselor conversations. Through principals and I think it's more on the the ground legwork that we just haven't had capacity for in the past. Uh but now we have a dedicated recruitment team that is going in and. Um almost replicating the playbook from like how L I U or Rutgers or SUNY would recruit. And those high schools, but presenting the economic option a little bit earlier. Um you know, kind of comparing outcomes, comparing trajectories of what does it look like to go to CUNY or SUNY first? What does it look like to go to? One of these accelerated accelerated training programs. Um that's just definitely helped increase top of funnel applications by far.
Brian, you have a question, I see.
Yeah, and uh Travis, we we've also been working with Compsa High as well, and that team is awesome, and they're thinking about it. I've been hearing actually from the D O E that they're. Uh Jade Greaves team specifically is trying to build, so like, you know how Compsa High is doing the year thirteen programming, so we're kind of. Also piloting with them on that that basis, and I think it's really amazing and interesting work and. Um I think that they're they're going to try to scale some pilots across year thirteen across the city. Um. I know that sometimes getting money is going to get money from D O E for that. Um but. It it I'm with you entirely because I I think just that. Um creating an earlier pathway is really important. Um and it will be interesting to see what that would look like on at scale, uh especially for different schools, because I know. They're also thinking about building a new version of the steam center. But related to healthcare and it's going to be in the Bronx. Which I'm from Queens, so you know, obviously I have bias and and I want other things, but um it'll be interesting to. See what that looks, I I I don't know if you've heard more about particularly that, but I think that they're going to try to do this at scale and. I'm still not sure exactly what that looks like, but that's going to be really interesting for. For all of us to make some of these connections, because you know, I think all of them are looking for various alternative pathways.
Yeah, I I I love that. And um you know, I've heard heard rumors, a couple of the schools that we work with that are promoting year thirteen and and really trying to invest in it. Um as their like core counseling strategy, it does sound like they're getting support there. I don't, I'm also not sure what it'll look like formally, but.
Yeah.
Um that's something we heard. So Jade Greaves for sure. I think they're doing amazing work on the pathways and like de-incentivizing. Just a hundred percent college for the those counseling strategies. Uh but we also had a good conversation or two with um Abby Jo Segal, um Mayor's Office for Talent and Workforce Developments. And they're taking, I think they're streamlining a lot of these offices like.
They've taken over youth employment, so Dave Fisher's team is going to be under them now, and I know she's going to be holding a bunch of stuff. So like. It's going to be interesting to see all of this and how it sort of connects, because I know they're trying to work with Jade's team and. Everything is so new, so it will be interesting to see how it all kind of pans out.
Yeah, yeah, they'd they'd be a fun invite, I think, for one of these network meetings too.
Yeah, yeah, um Jade came to one of these meetings, right? Early on. Um are are you referring to Abby Joe as a fun invite?
Yeah, I think especially because they're streamlining so many of those departments that are supporting this kind of work. Um.
Absolutely. Um we'll make a note of that. And I just wanted, Brian, you noted something in that I wanted to make note of, because we also have a healthcare sector network. Um did you say that they're looking. At a steam healthcare related.
I think so. That's the rumor, and I don't, I'm watching me be completely wrong here, but I just had a conversation with someone because. I remember uh speaking to them that they wanted to have something. Steam Center adjacent specifically related to healthcare, and I believe it's it's it's. Going to be positioned in the Bronx, but I don't know what the timing is with the capital infrastructure is going to look like. I know this is probably likely going to be a good D O E. Um. But if I hear any more or if I get any more insider tracking for like, I'll send it to you or Carrie.
Thank you. Google. Questions or thoughts for Travis around recruitment?
I had a question, but it's not very specific. So maybe you can, I'm just curious to hear a little bit more about what the the family orientation that was so successful, like. What did it look like? What did what did you do? What was the process? Just some of those like, can you walk us through kind of how you got to the really good outcome? Because I can assume, but I don't want to assume. I want to hear and learn.
Yeah, Jorge, do you want to talk a little bit about the the format? You led one of the workshops.
Um, yes, um, can you please repeat the question for a second?
Yeah, could you talk about the family orientation structure, um since you were leading some of the workshops?
So it was very interesting because we had um both um a Spanish and English panel. Uh happening at the same time. And basically it was, um we have. Three panels, one was initially presenting what Marcy is, um talking about the history of Marcy. It was led by Maya and. One of our lead instructors. The other one uh was about what partnerships are, how we navigate um their. Um families, um our fellows through partnerships with mentors, with volunteers. Um with hiring, so it's like we close entire process and then it was uh Q and A with. Some of our current fellows, our alumni, and it was very interesting to see how. Um they accepted fellows as going to be um. Part of the fall twenty twenty-two cohort. Later on, we're interacting with. Our current fellows and our alumni, and they were talking about their. Uh fears in terms of time commitment, in terms of like the intensity of the program, uh how were they. Going to be able to manage staff, the parents interacting with our current fellows. It was. Um nice to see the engagement and see how many people came to that day on a Saturday morning.
I love that. And I what Travis said earlier about like the family buy-in and. You know, I I wrote down here like had to lie to their families about dropping out. I was like, there's so many people in so many different ways that could probably relate to that. That story, were there any sort of? You know, was there anything that stuck out about those, that kind of same conversation in these workshops where you felt like, oh, we're really getting ahead of. You know, some of the stigma that's in place of not going to a four-year college or whatever, any good highlight conversation from the workshop that came out of that?
I think that the first thing that surprised me was the family support. Several um accepted fellow came with their families. Um some of the families of the fellows who are currently on the spring twenty twenty-two cohort also came. And the conversations were a lot were about. How rigorous the program was. There was an interest in knowing that they were going into a program that. It's going to put a lot of effort, but at the same time, a lot of support into help them. Achieve their goals, which is basically landing a tech job. So yes, I think there was a lot of conversations surrounding. The rigor of the program, the time commitment. How much support they have both in the classroom, but at the same time outside of the classroom. And yeah, stuff like that.
That's really exciting. Congratulations, you guys. Thank you for sharing.
Hopefully we can do it while we get, you know, big like the Knowledge House and all these other cool people, so. But yeah, and then the so the kind of other area that I was hoping to talk a little about and Helen, I know you've brought up apprenticeships a couple of times. This is right in the the wheelhouse here, but. We've really been experimenting a lot with our corporate partnerships centered around apprenticeship and. I think like two goals again around this type of activity and scale this year. One was you just scale, just simply scaling the amount of apprenticeship opportunities that we have for fellows coming out of the program. We built twelve apprenticeships last year with tech companies in New York, which was really fun. So net new jobs or programs that hadn't existed. And some of the goals around it coming to this year were, you know, one, how do we get more of those? And we have more employers coming to us to say, you know, hey, it's great that your students know this type of technology, but if they knew. Ruby on Rails or go or a little bit more about data engineering. We've actually hired them in as infrastructure engineers or data engineers, not just like a software engineer one or software engineer apprentice. So that along with the idea that we would really love employers to pay us money to do these types of things. Kind of led to a few experiments this year around what we're calling paid capstone at at Marcy. So the the goal around it is working with employer partners to understand if there are not zero to one gaps for tech skills, but almost like. Finishing school gaps as in, hey, it would save us three months of onboarding at this company if your software engineering graduates. New go or they knew a basic software for site reliability, engineering practice or tool. Taking the kind of last three months of our curriculum, which is a little bit more customizable and flexible. Customizing it around those hiring needs. And then flowing like straight into a hiring loop at those companies around competitive apprenticeship or full time. So. Piloted with Asana and a couple of other folks this year. To kind of funnel into high quality apprenticeship opportunities at the ends. But the basic goal is getting corporate sponsorship into curriculum development and curriculum delivery for an accelerated period of time. At the end of our program, having actual hiring commitments loaded on the end of that. And then being able to to work on more like practical projects. That expedite onboarding and ideally increase retention once folks are on the job. Not necessarily like the newest concept in the world, but I think it's been fun to play around in this space, particularly around like. What does software engineering like plus one look like in any of those key areas? And so we're seeing more movements at. Companies like Spotify and Twitch and Asana over the past year that are expanding on the idea of. Core software engineering apprenticeships to go to multiple departments as an area of growth. And so trying to get ahead of that. Being able to to have some flexible training options there. And then also. If we're just testing it out at the end of our program, we're able to see what, you know, potential other full programs might look like in those specific fields. So it's been fun. We're trying to to build it out. There's also potential that we've seen to partner with external orgs. Where we wouldn't have to do as much of the lift to train students over that time. But folks like Major League Hacking, Colab and Code Day are really strong organizations that we've worked with this past year. To think about like, what does a three month project that is designed to work on industry skills and funnel straight into employment opportunities look like? So we partnered with Colab for about five, eight of our students this year. We're seeing how that goes, but. Yeah, it's it's been fun and I think it's a cool strategy to be able to to be a little bit more flexible on the last part. For our programming and then expedite onboarding once fellows get on the job. And then hopefully offset the cost of our training as well along the way. But yeah, happy to talk through all of our secret sales strategies over here.
Um, Travis, I just have a quick, oh, Helen, you have your hands up. I didn't put mine up, so you go first.
Thank you. No problem. Travis, really excited for you because I remember when we met with your colleague. Be five years ago, six years ago, and this is just a seedling of an idea, and now it's blossomed into this amazing enterprise. So question for you, you reference apprenticeships. Are you talking about? Corporate sponsored apprenticeships like a more intense internship, extrajip, or are you talking about registered apprenticeships? Subsidized or affiliated with the DOL?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So we're talking about. Embedded in embedded apprenticeships at tech companies that are not DOL registered. So we have not worked with any registered apprenticeships. We have partnership criteria around ours. So. Things like if it is, if it exceeds six months as a apprenticeship, it must have full time benefits. The base salary. Is over eighty five thousand a year and there's a path to full time employment. There's embedded mentorship or formal learning goals, a lot of structures around that. So. We've kind of set our own criteria and again, luxury of being small. We're kind of trying to shoot above the typical like sixty three K range for those registered apprenticeships. Particularly around like software engineering or more advanced engineering skills.
Well, Helen, that was exactly my question, so.
Sorry, it means thunder.
Yeah, we we've tried like, so we actually had a. Elise and I had a really interesting call with IBM today and we're just like, how do we get involved in registered apprenticeships? And it's, we're just not at a scale where we make a splash on those types of programs. So like, obviously looked at Accenture and IBM and some of the other folks that are leading the charge there, but. Struggling to see, I I think the connection to salaries at that type of skill set. But then also, you know, competitive partnership opportunities for us as an organization, because we're not. Really big enough to benefit from like skills build or something like that at this point.
Other questions for Travis or any input around what you your agencies are doing around either of these topics? Scaling recruitment and or apprenticeships?
We're a lot.
You know, I was doing.
I'm sorry. We we have apprenticeships that we do with some of our corporate partners. But it's been hard to do the DOL in New York state that and that's what I had the challenge that we had. In New Jersey, we've had DOL apprenticeships for several years. But what we are going to be doing is because we're a national nonprofit. Is trying to get a national accreditation for our DOL apprenticeships. Which will remove a lot of the challenges of getting in New York City. I mean, if you if you work with the DOL or the DOE in New York City, New York State. It's hard. It's it's a it's a monolith. So if we can forego that and start it from the national level, I think it'll be easier for us to launch that way. And. If God willing, we do, I would be very happy to, you know, kind of share the tips of the trade or like what was successful for us because it is daunting.
So Helen, if if your apprenticeship becomes a national apprenticeship. That's a way kind of to circumvent the meeting the requirements for a New York City specific apprenticeship is what you're saying.
New York State, yes.
New York State, yeah. Great, thank you. Others? Travis, was that, I don't want to cut you off if you're.
That's all I got. That's all I got.
That's a lot. It's not all. Yeah, and I'm curious with the partners that you're working with. Around building apprenticeship models and pipelines. You mentioned Accenture. Are you working with them currently and you're part of? No, you're not.
No, we, it's not in our salary threshold to to recommend to graduates. It's underneath it.
I see. Okay. What and what is the salary threshold?
Eighty five for for base salary.
And I'm curious, Travis, because I remember I was reading about how last year Accenture bought. Forty eight companies in fifty two weeks. When you say Accenture, is it just Accenture core or also their bajillion subsidiaries?
Yeah, just Accenture core like out of their New York, just talk to their. The apprenticeship folks at the more central level and then out of the New York office for some of the folks that run those programs. But not through the subsidiaries, so mainly just core at this point. There there could certainly be good opportunities there for us to to explore.
Yeah, that's a good note. I'm curious. And we could find, we speak with Accenture pretty regularly because of one ten. And they had indicated, you know, we've been trying to work through this apprenticeship model with them because. They are right now in New York and nationally, it sounds like. Considering their apprenticeship as the one ten eligible entry into Accenture. And they described it as basically a single click to get into, you know, on it through Accenture's site. You indicate you're interested in an apprenticeship and as you fill out a form, you can indicate where, like what area of an apprenticeship you would be. Most eligible for best fit for interested. And I'm curious now that you say that. Is every apprenticeship? The same salary? Because you know, there are very different sets of skills needed. Going into the different areas that they will host apprenticeships.
Yeah, I've definitely seen different salary bands for different skill sets of apprenticeships. Although most of the new larger corporate ones I've seen pop up in the past year have been in the fifty five to sixty five thousand range. Even for tech and and software engineering. And I think part of it is just like the full national reach of those programs extending to non-high cost of living markets. And standardizing across those. But yeah, there's definitely some differentiation. I just haven't seen necessarily like. You know, for instance, like JP Morgan's early career program comes in at one ten. And then Accentures comes in at around sixty five or so. And so that's a big gap if you're targeting the same types of candidates.
Right. Yep, makes sense. Thank you. All right, I think. We might have wrapped on that section.
I don't think so. And as always, if people have any follow up. Questions, other things that they're working on, other things that they've seen others do, feel free to share out with the group. So we can get more of that. If not, I'm going to move on to our next section, revisiting the priorities. I dropped those in the chat. Easier to review and I should say that while these. Are numbered, they are very importantly not ranked. That's one of the things that we'll talk about today. And we're going to get to this in a minute or two, but before. Going to drop the link into the jam board just to make sure that no one has any trouble accessing that. So when we were looking at feedback from. One of the last meeting or meeting before that, we, there are two people who were commenting on the. The what should be the ranking of the priority goals in terms of front burner, back burner? And it was funny because for most of them, they had. The opposite order, although I think they, for number three. They both agreed that number three in this list should be the second. One to prioritize. So one of the things that we wanted to do today is one, obviously just. Get us all back on the same page in terms of the priority goals. And to talk about how we can start using them in. Ways to actually move them forward and make them reality. And of course, how we should prioritize those priority goals in terms of what we want to tackle collectively first. So if and before I go on, just want to make sure we have people who are newish, if there's any. Overwhelming questions like, wait a second, what are we talking about here at all? So this, these all tie into our process overall. That's nothing that you haven't all seen before in terms of. Turning the network into something that's affecting change internally and externally. For her to talk about the five eyes of our process. So we want today to think about that really specifically in the context. Of the priority goals so that we can use that as part of our broader process of the other things that we're discussing again, the. Asset infrastructure, the setting up the models, the logic model, and then of course, our actual implementation plan to. Get things done, as it were. So if you click on the link in the jam board, just want to make sure everyone can open that up properly and then I'll. Talk about what we're going to cover today. And if anyone. Has trouble with that, I know some systems just do not like jam board. Let me know. And we have similar questions for each of the priority goals that we mentioned. What what we want to tackle? First, how we should go about it. The smaller question of first steps, third question of strategies. Who else we get into the room to make it happen? And of course, any questions that anyone has about any of these things? So. For slides one to four, it's just those. And if you. Have any questions immediately, great. Otherwise, not going to, not going to talk yet about what's in five to seven. But just want to make sure that we come away with this with a clear sense of what our goals are and. Starting that's really key thinking about how we turn goals into planning. And then if there are no questions for now, I will turn it over to Megan, who is going to walk us through the actual. Jam boarding.
Yeah, so I think what would be helpful is if you could, please go to, let me see here. Page five. So we can kind of see all of them together one more time and then. And then I want to go back and think through like, okay, which one? What can we tackle first and how are we going to do it? And just kind of start throwing out some ideas. I know we don't have too much time left, so it'll be, you know, this rapid quick fire. But looking at these goals again. So this one here, the blue one that is systematized, digitized, a referral network to scale training and increase upscaling opportunities to bolster talent. Pipeline was from the feedback kind of bumped up towards the top of the priority list. So thank you. You, that was so amazing. I didn't know who was moving and it just started magically. So I think we should, if if it sounds good with you guys, let's look at these here and be like, what? Sense do we have about what we can tackle? First and priority ranking, and then we can maybe go to what we put in our top two depending on time and be like, all right, let's brainstorm. Who's going to help us do this? What are some ideas we could get started on that kind of thing? What do we think about that idea? Sounds good.
Yeah.
All right, so let's let's just chat because we have a smaller group than than I anticipated. So. Let's go to the first one here. And so the first one that we have down is strengthen collective mechanisms to negotiate with employers and with community colleges for articulation. And matriculation agreements. So. If you have any comments about where whether that how this should be placed in our ranking of four, please come off mute and share with me. Or if you guys have ideas about the best first step, I would love, love to hear about that. And Carrie, if you want to chime in with anything too, please feel free.
I was trying to recall how they were ordered. I know the one that I just moved from three to two. The the feedback we got, two people agreed that should be the second thing. The the first one was switched for the two people. So it might be helpful for this group, just. All to chime in looking at these saying like. This should be our number one. And is there any consensus? Around that? And if not, we can jump to number two for now and use the feedback form that we created. To to get, you know, let people think about a little more and say, yeah, this should be number one. What are some thoughts from the? What are some thoughts from the group?
Thoughts, questions, observations from other places, really anything relevant.
I think it makes a lot of sense because that is our greatest priority, is jobs. And I think the other ones support the system. So there's the mechanism behind it, but the priority should be the, the, the mechanisms. I mean, the green one, number one, yeah.
So number one feels like the number one. And any consensus around the blue one being number two?
I agree with that one too.
Others in the group?
Also totally fine to say, I don't know what should be first, but I know this should definitely be last.
And also if this looks good, that's even, that's great too. Do we think that this order looks good? We should also ask that question. Yeah, I see one nod. I see maybe two nods. All right, we're starting to.
All right.
All right. So let's look at number one. Um, does everybody know how to make a sticky in a jam board? Or if not, I can, I can make the sticky for you and, and post it. Um, thank you, Carrie. So any ideas about what a, a good first step for our group to be to strengthen collective mechanisms to negotiate with employers and with community colleges for articulation and matriculation agreements? So kind of hearing about what we're each, thinking about what we're each individually doing. You know, what can we do together as a unit to kind of strengthen our network partnerships together and move things forward for the constituents that we serve? Any ideas of good first step actions we could take on to start thinking about this? It could even be we should have a brainstorming session about what to do. That's a first step. And come off mute if you're not in the jam board. And I think Carrie will be typing it in for us.
Yeah. So folks in the jam board, if you want to if you're better at thinking and typing on your own, on the left-hand column, you see controls there. And the fourth one, if you click on that, a sticky note will come up. You could make it a different color if you like. Just type and when you start typing, save will come up and you could just save it. But if some, somebody prefers to talk, I'm happy to type for you.
So silence means something. So just tell me what you're thinking, even it's like, I don't know what to say. So we can talk about it. I think that's probably helpful. I know that we're like, kind of throwing this in at the last, uh, little stretch here. So if you guys want us to revisit this conversation in a future meeting, you can also share that with us. And some of these questions are in our follow-up feedback form. So I know some people want some time to like brew on these ideas. So we want to do our work and support you guys in the best way that we can. So just you know, let me know and I will do my best to accommodate moving forward.
I just, I, I, I could share a little bit of reflection, just thinking about some of the things that Travis and others spoke about earlier. Um, you know, first of all, just bringing the information that all of you brought to the table today is uh, uh, one of the things that falls under the best first step for me. Um, because hearing what you're experiencing with different employers, even knowing Travis that Accenture's apprenticeship, you know, compensation is too low for Marcy Lab School, not, not too low for other partners here because of the different training. If they're not doing software development, they're doing something else. Um, it meets the salary threshold for others, but knowing that it doesn't for you is actually really helpful information in negotiating with employers across one-ten. You know, having that conversation. Um, because if it's true for Accenture, I'm sure it's true for other one-ten partners and they need to know that they might not get the skills they need for some of their apprenticeship slots.
Yeah, I mean, one thought on, on that, like we had talked, maybe I, I can't remember how many meetings ago, but um, about all of the different like qualities of jobs that were considered like competitive or what we thought were right for our graduates and even being more proactive and communicating that externally, um, like as a group around you know, things like if, uh, you know, if it's an apprenticeship, you need to have PTO, you know, you can't just have like zero PTO days just because it's an internship. Or jobs over six months that are contract to hire should have health benefits associated with them. Like I'm sure there are things that we can all agree about would be important for our graduates to feel comfortable referring them into opportunities. Um, I know that's part of like the one-ten work as well, but um, at least coming up with some, you know, basic worker bill of rights type ideas around tech employment could be um, a good starting place.
And what, what do folks think about how we can be most effective in relaying some of that information as a collective to employers? Like what, what's a strategy toward change?
I know I'm not a tech person, but I would like to see like, you know, if we have more presentations like Travis's today, I only thought of this today, like, okay, we want to hear from each other what's going on. And then in the meeting afterwards as part of Q and A, it's like, okay, so what are we going to do with what Travis just shared with us? As a network, how are we going to use that to build? You know, so like, like after we have those conversations, strategize how we will leverage what we share with one another to make our work better as a unit. Pardon me if I'm speaking out of turn. I know we're nearing our, our final five, five minutes here. So if there's any last thing you guys want to share, let us know. But you should have access to this. We'll share it out again. So feel free to to share notes with us or ideas. You can also email us and we will continue to plug away and figure out how we can work together as a unit to make things happen. Um, so I appreciate your your contributions. Uh, we do have our our standard, uh, feedback form that we're going to ask for everybody to fill out. Some of these questions are also in there. So if you'd rather reflect than than share at this moment, you know, you can share some of that in the feedback form as well. There's space for you to do that. Um, and I believe I want to pass it off to Dave before we go talking about, uh, scheduling in our next in-person sessions. I think there was a question listed on the agenda to check in with everybody about.
Yeah, I mean, I know we don't have much time, but really wanted to see about getting us a fixed, regular, recurring being time. Uh, so the very least, if there are days of week or times of day when anyone's like, this will definitely always be bad or probably uh, always be good. Uh, that's really key. Um, one of the things we're looking at for the next, uh, meeting specifically is whether people can do September twenty-ninth, uh, same time as today. Um, so again, I don't if you have the answer now, great for either those two questions. If you don't, that's okay. We will get to this, uh, in feedback form in email. Um, so really just trying to make it easier for everyone by putting aside the scheduling question.
Thanks, Dave. And we also hope to maybe get some input on an in-person session upcoming in the future. So I just want to plant that seed and see how y'all are feeling about that. You can let us know. You don't need to answer right now because we're running out of time. Um, and as always, please continue to, to provide feedback and insight on who else you want to see in the room in these meetings. And if you have good ideas of how to get those people here, that could help us help support the network in doing so, please share that with us. And with that, I will pass back to Carrie if you have any closing thoughts, or if anybody has any closing thoughts, questions, thoughts, suggestions, so on and so forth.
Sorry. Yes, one thing I wanted to share, um, before I open the floor to others is that the regional director, um, for the Northeast region from one-ten is shifting into another position at one-ten. And so they are interviewing for that position. Um, I, they're thinking they might fill it within two weeks or so. Um, so we could, we'll keep you updated on that. But once that person is in place, I think it would also be a good idea to have him um, join this group since all of the tech partners are also endorsed one-ten partners. Um, so we'll, we'll put a pin on that in that, um, for the Jobs First team. And also I have a note to reach out to the mayor's office of workforce development. Um, to bring them to the conversation and uh, once we find out a date, if they could, if you all could do September twenty-ninth and they could do September twenty-ninth, great. I know September is tricky for some folks with the startup school and everything else. Um, but once we confirm with them, we'll make sure we circulate something so that we develop a set of questions that we, we have for them before they come to the. And that's it from, I think from the Jobs First team. So anything from any of you before we close out?